Yes, I hear you.
I'll read your hair. You just weren't pushing that.
The Congress.
We have this thing.
Scott, can I put you back in the agenda? No? Anybody else need to agenda? Yeah, I want Mr. Mina. Let me get over. Okay. I would like to call order February ninth, twenty twenty-one Columbia Borough Council meeting. Could I have a call please? Council President Zing.
Here.
Councilperson Kaufman.
Here.
Councilperson Fitzgerald.
Here.
Councilperson Stevens. Councilperson Littner.
Here.
Councilperson Burgard. Mayor Look. Do we know if he's dialing in? I thought someone mentioned he was dialing in.
I thought he was. He just got the, uh, flame on.
No response? No response. Okay. Um, and I believe caller number one is Chief?
I believe so. Thank you.
Um, do we have a member of the ministerium? All right, do you would like to give an invitation, please?
Good afternoon, everyone, or evening. How's everyone doing? We gotta boost it up. We can't ask God for something if we're not a little loose. We gotta be willing to give as well as this is take. So, my name is Evangelist Jan Perez. I'm representing the ministerium. I am a member of Ashley Tabernacle Church of God in Christ in at one sixty-five South Fifth Street, Columbia. My pastor is Pastor Wayne Scott. First off, I would like to ask anyone if they have any requests, any prayers that need to go up. It doesn't make sense that we're gonna ask God for something and not ask God for what we need. So, are there any requests this afternoon? Oh, so we think everything is all right with the world, right? In the time of turmoil.
Ask for, uh, intention for all those in our community that have been affected by COVID.
Okay.
For healing.
Any others? So, they're gonna be silent prayers, right?
Wisdom.
Wisdom. Very good, all right. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you first of all to give you thanks. Thanks for waking us up this morning. Thanks for allowing us yet another day. Heavenly Father, we just praise your holy name. We ask that you look on these people that are in this place, those within the hearing of my voice, that you, uh, touch them, God. Touch their minds with wisdom, Heavenly Father. Bless them that they may speak for others with true love, Heavenly Father. That their words will be few and seasoned with grace. Heavenly Father, as we call on your holy name, once we have your ear, God, we ask that you touch each and every one in this place. Touch them, God, that their families will be okay. Touch them, God, that the community will be okay. Touch them, God, that the United States would be okay. Touch them that the world would be okay. Heavenly Father, touch us that we would emanate love in all that we do and all that we say. Bless us with your special wisdom, God. Allow us to think outside the box. And most of all, think with love because it gives us justice. It gives us thought for others, Heavenly Father. Oh, God, as these people represent Columbia, Heavenly Father, may their plans be to grow, God. In the name of Jesus, God, touch your minds that those things that would easily beset us, don't touch us in this situation, God, that we may think clearly, God, and not only for ourselves but for others, God. Now, as we leave this place, Heavenly Father, we ask that you give us peace and traveling mercies till we get back to our homes. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. And Eric, would you like to lead us into that?
Absolutely. I declare Jesus to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of executive information sessions. This evening, February ninth, at six thirty P.M., Council held an information session to receive information only items from the manager and solicitor. Additions, deletions, or reorganization of the agenda. I would like to add item ten, B as in doing, to consider the ordinance nine twenty-four to vacate, um, Pleasant Avenue. That was advertised that we would be having hearing on that tonight and inadvertently not included on the original agenda. So, we need to add that. And I would also like to remove item eleven A, the authorization to pay bills. This is the one we had discussed. We were going to start using this process. And, um, due to some issues, it was not able to be put together in time to get, to get it all together to be done this evening. So, we'll start that at the next meeting. Does anyone else have anything else they would like to add or remove or reorganize?
That's right. Yep, got it. We're good. Yep.
All right. Next, citizen comments. Um, I didn't see any signups. Did you motion and go accept the agenda as it was presented? Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the amended agenda as mentioned? And a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Burgard and a second by Councilperson Littner to approve the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Citizen comments. I didn't. Yep.
Can we announce the executive sessions?
No, 'cause we do that at the end when we turn. Yeah, I did announce it. I announced our information session. Yep. No signups. Did, uh, did anyone want to speak on another agenda item?
Just making sure.
Excuse me, Eric, just pause video.
Yeah, just coming back.
Um, all right. Next, could I have a motion to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one? And a second.
Second.
A motion by Councilperson Kaufman, a second by Councilperson Littner to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to approve the Borough Council work session minutes for February second, twenty twenty-one? And a second. I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, a second by Councilperson Burgard to approve the Borough Council work session meeting minutes for February second, twenty twenty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, next, we have a presentation from Doug Cunningham and Scott Rhino on the twenty twenty annual report for the fire company. All right. Fifteen minutes, right? No! This is your first radio.
All right, good evening. Uh, I believe more might be working on getting the presentation up. Uh, and I did hand out copies at some point last week or two weeks ago. So, it was, uh, one of the first things like I always like to tell people is, uh, you know, fifteen years ago, I became a A Chief Officer. Always said that I didn't wanna do the presentations and the annual reports and all that stuff. And as time has gone past, I actually kind of enjoy it, so call me weird or whatever you want. Kinda like enjoying sitting down and looking at the reports and the annual information. So, um, for the report that's up, again, just the cover page, small fire that we had up on Luther Lane. Uh, so that's the picture this year. Table contents will direct you to wherever you want, uh, information to be. Something new this year on page one, I did kind of a little demographics for Columbia Borough. Uh, so again, a lot of this stuff is what you can look over on your own. Uh, for all the, you know, people watching or in attendance, uh, this is on our webpage. So, they are all downable for the last, uh, four, five, six years, monthly and annual reports. Page two has our mission statement and our values and also our vision statement. So, again, I've been reading that since I only have fifteen minutes. But, uh, uh, page three just has a message from me, talks about some of the challenges, uh, that we had in twenty twenty, just like everybody else. Talks a lot about food. So, uh, calls us some headaches in the fire department, uh, some challenges and things that we had to, uh, to, uh, step up and, uh, you know, overcome through the fire department size. Twenty twenty-one officers, um, that are, uh, been elected or appointed for this, this year currently. And the, uh, page five, uh, we'll talk a little bit about what's on page five. Uh, a couple of things I'd like to look at is probably the bottom chart there is the average years of, or, yeah, the average years of service and the average age of your firefighters, uh, as a whole with this Columbia Borough Fire Department. So, as you can see, our average years of service is about thirteen and a half, thirteen point four two to be exact. So, a pretty good number. And we have a real low number of average years of service that's showing us very young firemen, uh, that maybe not have the experience. Uh, fourteen years is a pretty good year in the service, in the fire service. Uh, so they have some experience under the belt. They've seen a couple of fires or rescue calls or investigations. So, it gives them a good understanding of what's going on in the fire scene. As far as the, uh, average age, as you can see, the average age is about thirty-six point six three, uh, which again is a pretty good. Um, if we see that number creeping up, um, that's a scary thing for you as the borough and for us as well. That means we're not getting that young blood in there, those younger kids that are bringing that number down. And if that number continues to climb, at some point, we're all gonna age out of the service just because of our sheer, um, new years of service and time. So, we wanna see that. It's been pretty consistent over the last four years, as you can see. Uh, those numbers have been pretty consistent, which is good. Page seven, eight, nine, and ten, we're gonna skip through them for the most part up to nine. That's just our apparatus. You can read on that and what it does and years of service it's been in, uh, the borough so far. Uh, we're gonna start getting into the statistics of, uh, the box alarms. So, the borough has a number of boxes in it. Um, a couple of things, there's again a ton of information there that, uh, I'd like to share with everybody so you can see, you kinda see what your fire department does in Columbia. Uh, but the box number one, eighty dash zero one, you know, if we go over the whole thing, you can see that in that box alone, there was ninety-three calls. The pictures on the side, the top one on all the box, um, statistics is the GPS plots wherever a hall was in Columbia Borough. All right, so you can see wherever a hall in that box was. So, some of the information I always like to share is your turnout time. So, turnout time by the fire department is the time of dispatch to the time a fire truck, in my eyes, a fire truck responds. So, that's, uh, on box number one, that's three minutes and eleven seconds. All right, so pretty good for come, for four coming responders that are in bed, getting out of bed, getting dressed, getting in their car, driving to the firehouse, or maybe they're at the firehouse hanging out. But we're getting in, uh, in the fire truck, the first fire truck's out of the door, about three minutes and eleven seconds in that box. Uh, next thing we wanna talk about is our response time. So, that's the time from the dispatch to when we're on the scene. All right, so in box zero one, it was six minutes and fifty-six seconds. So, as we get boxes that are farther away from near the firehouse, the longer it's gonna take is just because of the sheer time that we have to cover. All right, and then again, there's many factors, time of day, traffic, weather, those types of things are definitely, um, you know, factors as well. Uh, another thing to talk about, um, in there is, uh, you know, the property saved, uh, one point three million dollars of property that were in danger. Again, not every time is there a fire, um, when it's in danger. Um, but it could be, uh, someone burns some food. So, if that food went to that lawn, it could have caused the house fire. So, that's property in danger. So, we had one point three million dollars just in that box. Uh, we lost two hundred and seven thousand, um, uh, property in that because of some type of fire. All right? And then, uh, the average turnout firefighters for that call, or for that box was twelve point two. So, you have, uh, you know, twelve firemen coming for those calls. And if you look across all the boxes, we never had less than twelve going to a call in Columbia Borough, which is fantastic. Uh, page eleven, same thing, turnout time was three oh three. Our response time was six fifty-six, so it was, uh, I believe it was the same response time. Um, property, uh, lost in that, that box was twenty-four thousand last year and, uh, one hundred and ninety thousand saved in that box. Let me catch up here.
What page do you want to?
Page eleven. And again, as you scroll down through there, these are all online, so if anybody wants to see any more of all of the, check out our webpage, cbfde.com, and, uh, download, read yourself, and preview the information.
The web link is running really slow, so those of you following on the link, it's gonna lag a little behind, but there you go.
Over there?
Yep.
Okay, so we're back to box two. I think we just about covered that average, uh, personnel from that box, which is eight, eighty dash zero two. Uh, that's going to be, uh, um, twelve point four firefighters. Go on to page twelve, uh, again, covering that same information. Turnout time for that box was three minutes and twenty seconds, so a little slower. Uh, but really, very good numbers for guys that are coming home, guys and gals, females, that are coming home from, uh, you know, from their house, eating dinner, or whatever they're doing to get a fire truck out the door. Total response time there was seven forty-four. Again, we're getting across town. That's gonna be the, uh, box up around Heatherback. It's a rural box that we have. So, if there's a fire up there, we can have some tankers coming as well, because there's not as many firefighters over there. Uh, so we have to bring in a lot of tools. Um, we had, uh, four hundred, uh, million, or four million, uh, in property saved. Uh, I believe that is just a fire at, uh, Susquehanna Valley Rescue Center. They had a coffee machine or a soda machine burn up there last year. I think that's why the expense, uh, loss was five hundred bucks. Um, so we had a big property. There's a lot bigger value there than just a single family home in Columbia. Page thirteen, uh, box number four, uh, dash zero, or eighty dash zero four, turnout time there is six minutes and twenty se- seconds. Um, box number four is another rural box down off of four forty-one Blue Lane to Borough Farm. No hydrants there. Actually, that last call, there was only one call in that box last year. You can see the GPS plot there somewhere, um, that it was a non-emergency call. So, again, the firemen slowed their response down, but it's a non-emergency call. We don't go like to sirens in a hurry. That's why when you look at our response, our, uh, our, uh, response time, it's zero minutes, because I only do emergency calls for response timers. You know, I want a true number of what it takes us to get there in an emergency. I don't wanna worry about non-emergency and then that skewer or a number saying, well, it takes you twelve minutes to get there all the time. But we're also accountable to non-emergency calls. I'm gonna look at the emergency responses for all of these boxes. So, that's why there was zero minutes. Zero loss there. Uh, I believe that was the, uh, police department, and they blew up some kind of, uh, package that was suspicious or something, and they wanted the fire department to stand by. That was done on the Borough Farm. Box number five, all right, that's where you're sitting right now. Our, our response time to this box was two minutes and two seconds. Very, very good, um, you know, response time for volunteers. Uh, our response time to this box was five fifty-six. There was four million dollars saved in this, uh, district, in this box, uh, but two point one million dollars lost. Um, the big loss in this box, if you can remember, was Union Street, the garages in the, uh, four, five hundred block, I believe it was, um, of Union Street. That was one point four million dollar loss just in that one fire. A lot of classic cars, a huge property. Um, classic cars are really good at that value up in that fire. So, most of our fire was at that one fire. Uh, that's just including that garage. That's not including the house that crossed the street that had fire damage, because that was a wind-driven fire. If you remember, it was very windy that day. And then the exposure next to it actually caused a fire as well. Um, so we had, you know, our hands full that day. Um, average response for this box here was, uh, thirteen point four firefighters. That's a good number. The eighty dash zero six, which is gonna be out towards, uh, Banner Street, um, past the firehouse, about where the line is for this box. Uh, turnout time there was one minute and twenty-two seconds, and our response time is four fifty-two. Uh, we had a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars saved and zero loss in that box. Uh, thirteen point two, uh, firefighters we lost calls. Box number seven, which is gonna be anything on Route thirty, um, and some of four forty-one Route thirty intersection area, the, uh, the newly trafficked intersection. Um, turnout time there was five thirty-one, so that was our slowest response time to get out the door. And unfortunately, it's our longest response area for those parts. Uh, but our response time there was eight fifty-five. Uh, we had twenty thousand dollars saved and, uh, five, twenty-five hundred dollars lost. Most of that could be car fires, those types of, uh, incidents out on Route thirty. Um, average person error was thirteen. Go to page seventeen, uh, always like this, um, when you look at this, there's not much information here, but when you literally sit down and look at the map, every one of those red dots is a response in Columbia Borough for us. All right, so there is not too many parts of this town that we don't touch throughout the, you know, the three hundred and sixty-five and eights. All right, so every one of those dots is a call. Page eighteen's gonna be just a breakdown by municipalities where we do it for response. Um, statistically, this year, we're fifty-four percent, um, in Columbia Borough, so fifty-four percent are called, we're right here in, uh, Columbia. Uh, West Hefield Township, again, very close to us, they surround us. Um, it would make sense that they are one of our higher response numbers as well, so they were twenty, twenty-one percent. And then everywhere else we go fills in that about, uh, you know, twenty percent of other calls. Uh, mutual aid is, uh, very beneficial for us and to them. Uh, again, uh, we can't handle everything ourselves. We have our troubled days as volunteers. Um, you know, they have their troubled days, so we need each other to, you know, to help each other out when our municipalities need us. So, you know, helping each other out is a good thing. Incident types, if you look at page nineteen, this number's always in here. Some people may understand this, some do not, so I wanna just explain it real quick. If you look at the numbers there, uh, like one hundred, two hundred, right there, or right at the very top there, that's the breakdown. So, we report to the National Fire and Security Reporting System, NIFRAS is what we call it. It's a standard reporting system that we do across the United States. So, a house fire in Columbia is a St. House fire in San Francisco or in Mexico. All right, a house fire is a one-eleven in the coding system. That's the way the National Fire Reporting System can get true numbers across the United States when we give you this, give this information. So, we give this information to the county, the county shares it to the state, the state shares it to the federal. And then we can get true numbers across the United States of where we are with, uh, types of fires, ages of people lining fires, um, you know, those types of data that we, that we share. So, it's common reference to all the United States. So, that's what we do with numbers before. And the key, um, break below that is breakdown of what, uh, one hundred, uh, number is. So, number one hundred's gonna be fires, including structure, local properties, brush, vegetation, that type of stuff and so forth. Again, look at it one more time, um, since I'm cut shorter. All right, next page is gonna be twenty. Again, a big breakdowns for, uh, property loss and save. All right, so if you look at twenty nineteen versus twenty twenty, twenty nineteen is huge, uh, in the property, the bar graph there. The reason being is our fires in twenty twenty happened and seemed to happen in much larger properties, more property value. So, it makes our property saved, uh, much larger and also potentially our fire loss. If you look at twenty twenty, it's much smaller, but you can see the property value lost and saved, uh, or at least the property value and property value saved is much larger than twenty twenty. Because again, we didn't have large potential fires in large expensive properties. They were more residential families this year. All right, if you look at the fire loss there, we actually lost more fire this year in twenty twenty. So, we lost, uh, half a billion dollars more, give or take, in twenty twenty, even though that chart looks smaller. All right? Some notable fires below it, something new, I never added that before. These are any fires that are twenty-five thousand dollars or more. All right, so very expensive fires. Um, some of those you'll see, uh, right next to each other, like you see the five thirty-seven Union and the five forty-nine. All right, that's gonna be the exposure fire. Even though that was an exposure fire, it still did over, uh, fifty, well, fifty thousand dollar damage. All right? So, again, just kind of a breakdown for your property values, and you can read more information on that as well. Go on to page twenty-one. You look at some of the, uh, ignition factors, uh, causing origin of the fires. All right, you can kinda see the pie chart there, break it down for unintentional, um, you know, act of nature, undetermined others. Um, and you also see a, uh, art, uh, unintentional set fire. Uh, which one is that? Uh, orange. Orange is gonna be the intentional set fire. Some of you may remember, we had that car fire across from the post office that was intentionally set. So, that was our one arson fire this year, and it's the only one that was ruled arson. Um, and we didn't have it in twenty twenty, which is good. Uh, area of origin, if you go down into the next little box there on page twenty-one, it's just gonna give you the breakdown of where fires happened in Columbia, uh, inside a property. Some of them may be, like, if you see added vink in the crawl space, um, that could be because of an exposure fire. So, a lot of times in the roadways in Columbia, fires across the bedroom, kitchen, it goes up to the space, uh, in the roof, the added space area, and it'll spread across. So, when we have exposure- So when we have exposure building, a lot of times it's in the attic. All right, so just so you can see that a little bit. Incident statistics on page twenty-two. Again, top one has calls by day. And statistically, we're pretty even across the board. Monday and Fridays were our busiest days, as you can see. Hours, breakdown, five shifts. And I do this every month, I did it every month for the monthly reports. But you can see we had a decrease across every shift for calls, but COVID definitely slowed us down in March and April. So we're a little, a little less calls this year. And you can see that on the chart next to the shifts between nineteen and twenty. Response hour, that's pretty, pretty normal. There is a little variances in there. A lot of times about five o'clock, you start to see it rise, starts to fall off, you have tech clock, nine tech clock, because everybody's at work or they're done cooking. And then at eleven o'clock, it usually starts to climb a little bit till about one o'clock, two o'clock, because everybody's out, out running around, getting lunch, making dinner, doing something. So you can have those kitchen-type fires or smoke alarms. And then it usually drops off again a little bit till about four o'clock, and then it climbs again, because people are home cooking again, people are out in the booth coming home from work, car crashes, those types of things. And then it usually dies off. You see our midnight is very busy this year. Again, sometimes you just get those loops that, you know, you get those times that are, you know, off, off the normal way. But that's response by hours. Incident comparison, this is a great one. I love looking at this one, just to see where we are. If you go to page twenty-four and you look at rescues, water, which is about five or ten down right there, I can see it, yep. If you look at that, and what happened in twenty eighteen, other than we had a lot of water. So you can see why we had sixty-three water rescues that year, but we're back to our normal, you know, four, ten, fifteen calls a year for water rescues this year. But that's the nice thing, to be able to look at that trend over four years, how, you know, calls go up or down for certain reasons or act of nature. So again, look at those. They're interesting. I actually find them very interesting myself. Page twenty-five is just going to be our training. Training was, again, a challenge last year because of COVID. The fire school shut down. If you read my letter, one of the things I stated in, you know, my letter to everybody is, we shut the firehouse down. First time in, you know, thirty-three years that I've been in the fire service, we shut the firehouse down. It was a challenge for us, because we weren't allowing the volunteers to hang out at the firehouse, but trying to get the fire trucks out in a timely fashion. The guys stepped up to the challenge. All firefighters stepped up. I honestly believe they were just trying to get away from their wives and girlfriends and boyfriends and everything else. They wanted out. But our response times did not suffer this year, even though we weren't having people hang out at the firehouse. And then with COVID, we couldn't train as a group or had difficulties training as a group, as a group. School shut down. We put on a glass of box, only come in, hack, we'll come in, the state fire cavity shut down. So a lot of, you know, the schools shut down for that. A couple of guys were able to complete some national certifications. Always big on that. That's right at the very bottom there. So you have Jay Michael Zurg, he completed his fire officer two. They're tested, you know, on knowledge and skills to be able to document and, you know, file and write policies. Again, it all depends on which one you're completing. Todd Legcat, you can see there, completed his instructor one. So he makes that beneficial for us, because now he's a certified fire instructor. So he has an understanding of how to present classes. It's almost like a teaching certificate for the fire service. So it helps us, you know, be able to try to educate our members in-house, you know, well. Matt and myself, we were able to complete before COVID, the health and safety officer. So again, just more documentation and paperwork for us on, you know, fire injuries and trying to write policies on the safety of firefighters. Twenty-six, again, some fire prevention information on there. Not, not a whole bunch happened last year, because again, COVID. A couple of places were able to finish it. We had a couple of Boy Scouts come out to help them with their farming shit. Badge, one of them came and watched us do a vehicle extrication towards the end of the year. We did some fire extinguisher trainings at nursing facilities and also factory. I requested it towards the end of the year. So we were able to get some things done, but not as much as always, as we usually do. Smoke detectors were huge in the beginning of the year before COVID really sunk in. COVID sunk in, we slowed down our fires, extinguisher, sorry, fire, smoke detectors installation, only because of COVID until we were able to get enough of PPE for our people. And then once we had PPE, we were sending the guys back out to do the smoke detector installations. I do not have that number, how many we installed. Twenty-seven, this is mostly for West Hennfield Township. I give the same report to West Hennfield Township as well. So the top of that is just the GPS plots of everywhere we had a call from township. So you can see that. We can see that there's a thirty-four percent decrease in the township. We didn't have as many calls in the West Hennfield Township last year. So we had a little decrease there. But Mount Bill's first new area was huge. We lost about seventy-three percent decrease. They did change some of their responses for vehicle accidents, which took the rescue stuff off, so that's some of that reasons. But again, there's multiple reasons there. Just COVID itself slowed everything down in the beginning of the year. Some information there, and then I'll also do the, the fire comparison response on page twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And you can look and see how we responded there again, what calls increased, which decreased. And then the last thing for West Hennfield Township, we just include our response time. Sorry, our turnout time for our fire trucks in West Hennfield Township. Again, if I did the response times to the township, some of those could be twenty minutes, fifteen minutes, till we get the whole way across the township for certain calls. So with every guy, I just show the response time, the turnout time, so they can see, you know, we're getting down to about three and a half, four minutes for their faults as well.
You're at twenty-three minutes, Doug.
Sorry, I'm done. No questions, because I'm over to that.
But, hey, I would just like to say congratulations, Doug, on your retirement.
Sorry, sorry.
Well, as chief.
I read too cold.
As chief, I would like to congratulate Chief Rhino on his appointment to Columbia Borough Police Chief, I'm sorry, Fire Chief. You know, I think as demonstrated in the statistics that you shared today, we have a uniquely high number of volunteers in our department compared to the national mean. And I think that that speaks to two different things. I think that that speaks to the character of the folks in our community who want to get involved and stay involved, and I think it speaks to the quality of the leadership, and that's you guys. So on behalf of the borough, everybody, all the residents here, all the council, I want to say thank you. Keep up the good work, and we're grateful for you.
May I do anything?
Laurie, can you let the record reflect that the mayor didn't wait up? He is only, he is only going to meeting now. Mayor Lux, do you have anything you would like to say?
Not at this time, Madam President. Thank you.
Anything for you, Chief Brummer?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. At this time, could I have a motion to adjourn the regular meeting? And a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman and a second by Councilperson Litter to adjourn the regular Borough Council meeting to head into the public hearing. At this point, I would like to open the public hearing, oh, I'm sorry, all in favor of adjournment.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This is my first time doing one of these. All right, so now we're going to open the public hearing to consider ordinance nine twenty-five, twenty twenty, to rezone seventy-five South Twelfth Street from rural residential to institutional residential. As you all may remember, when we, when we went through this, ordinance several meetings ago, we said this was necessary, because when the rezoning happened back at the end of twenty nineteen, almost all of the area of the old swimming pool was resumed. However, there was one small parcel that was not resumed. So this is to rezone that one parcel to the institutional residential for St. John Hurst. Are there any public comments on this item?
I just wanted to say that this was advertised in, in accordance with Section six oh nine of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, and has been recommended for approval by both your Planning Commission and the Lancaster County Planning Commission, so.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments or concerns from council?
That concludes this public, I'd like to close the public meeting, or I'm sorry, the public hearing on ordinance nine twenty-five, twenty twenty. And I would like to reconvene the regular Borough Council meeting at seven thirty-seven PM. We're back into the regular meeting. Could I have a motion to approve ordinance nine twenty-five of twenty twenty, to rezone seventy-five South Twelfth Street from rural residential to institutional residential? And a second? I have a motion by Councilperson Litter, a second by Councilperson Kaufman, to approve ordinance nine twenty-five of twenty twenty, to rezone seventy-five South Twelfth Street from rural residential to institutional residential. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Could I have a motion to adjourn the regular council meeting? And a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman and a second by Councilperson Litter to adjourn the regular meeting at seven thirty-eight PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And now we are going to open the public hearing for ordinance nine twenty-four, twenty twenty-one, to vacate, close, and remove from Columbia Borough Street Plan and map Pleasant Avenue between Union Street and Avenue N in Columbia Borough. Again, this was read at a previous meeting. This is taking out that little piece of alley right off of Union beside the St. Peter's Apartments parking lot. This will allow them to reconfigure the parking lot and so forth. Does anyone have any public comments related to this? Okay, just here to make sure it goes through, Mike?
And just again, I'll make sure. This was advertised twice in accordance with Section seventeen thirty-one of the Borough Code. So everything was done as we needed to do it for this.
Well, I should have asked that, because normally they ask that of yourself.
Thank you. All right, any other questions, comments, or concerns? At this time, the public hearing for ordinance nine twenty-four, twenty twenty-one is closed. And we are re-entering the Columbia Borough Council regular meeting at seven forty PM. At this time, do I have a motion to approve ordinance nine twenty-four, twenty twenty-one, to vacate Pleasant Avenue? And a second? I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, a second by Councilperson Litter, to approve ordinance nine twenty-four of twenty twenty-one, to vacate, close, and remove from the map Pleasant Avenue. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right. You're on second. Next, well, we removed item ten A, so, or I'm sorry, eleven A here on Act One, eleven B. Could I have a motion to consider authorizing the manager to sign addendum number one to the contract with Gavin? And a second? The motion by Councilperson Burgard and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to consider authorizing the manager to sign addendum number one to the contract with Gavin.
Would you like to fill us in?
Sure. So, as we're all aware, and to be clear, council hired Gavin back in the fall of last year to help us work through the communications with the, the purchase of the McGinnis Airport. With that being put on hold right now due to some legal issues in the transfer, we contacted them again after our workshop in, in January, when talking about communication. I was asked to contact them again and see if they'd be available to work with us to pause the communications on the airport project and to move forward on helping us look at a, a new branding and new logo for the borough. So I've asked them for a, an addendum to the contract. They have brought that forward. It's before you tonight. The, the money is almost a swap from our, our monthly retainage to the, the cost it'll cost them to, to bring this forward. They expect two to three months to develop a new logo. Commissioner Burgard, being now knighted as the communications czar, is going to be working with me. We'll put together a committee to, to work to bring forward a, a new branded logo for the town. And I'm excited about this possibility to, to really show and show off who Columbia really is and to, to get a logo and branding that truly fits who we are and what we do. The one that we currently use is, is a good logo to look at the harmony between the River Towns, but I want something that really exemplifies who we are as a community. So upon your authorization, should you do that tonight, I look forward to working with the committee and working with Gavin to bring forward a, a logo that we can be proud of and will truly represent this town.
When you said swap the retainer, are, are we not paying a retainer?
We are not.
Since we are not using.
We're putting that on hold, and we're, we're, we're going to be spending this money on just doing this work. And then at, at the time that the airport ramps back up again, which we believe it will, at that point, we will re-engage them on that aspect.
Would that be in our book before council to, to consider that engagement?
Well, that's, that's one you've already approved, so we're just putting it on hold, and then we'll reactivate it. I'll, I'll be clear when we bring that back online again. But the council's already authorized that one.
So the agreement that's in our packet from December twenty-first is for the logo and branding. Is that correct?
That's correct. So it's thirteen thousand dollars to work with them to, to develop a new branding and logo package for the borough?
Because here it says thirteen five, and on the other paper it says thirteen. There, there's two different. So with it being dated December twenty-first, was that approved then? I don't quite understand why it's dated that date, if we're voting on this tonight.
This is, that's when the original contract was signed and approved, and, and the addendum is the next page down. That, or next few pages down. That is, is just a signature page for us to... Total budget is, is on this page, which is page, page three. They revised the contract to show that currently we'll be doing a little budget project of thirteen five in a one-time payment to do the branding for the borough. So what you're saying is the original contract and the amendment being added.
That happens if we never move forward with PR program.
Well, then we'll just terminate that contract. If, if for some reason we, we feel like we do not need them anymore for any, any of the communications, we can terminate at that time.
I'm just curious, and I'm not saying this is right or wrong, I'm just curious to know why we just didn't get a proposal to do the branding and the logo design and keep the other signed contract in place and cancel it if we had to at some point? It seems kind of odd to me to have to require. It seems kind of odd to me to have to require amendment and, to an original contract. And when we have to go engage with the original contract, now it's been amended and we've got to do some kind of screwy things with that. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, because this one we're not paying, I mean, if we didn't have the amendment, we'd be paying dollars.
So we did something very similar with the, um, the grants that we got from the DCNR to do work out at the River Park. If you remember, we got a $30,000 grant from the National Park Service that's being funded through the DCNR program to begin looking at Phase Three engineering. Rather than stopping one and starting a whole new one, we amended, we amended that contract, we amended that agreement with DCNR to add these additional funds to it. So we keep one contract moving rather than stop one, start one, and start another one again.
Okay. So essentially what you're saying is we amended the old contract to do this, and if we do engage with, just to have another contract right now? No?
So.
Yeah, shouldn't need a new one.
Should need to.
This, this allows us to put on, on pause and not end the contract with them for the communications and PR work. We just simply pause it, we're not paying the retainage fee of 2,500 a month.
And we still have the option to cancel it.
And then we can cancel it, or we can re-engage them, at which point then the retainage fee will pick back up again.
I'm just worried about being on the hook for another contract somewhere, somewhere.
Sure. So we talked through, and we felt like this is probably, even though it sounds convoluted, it's probably the cleanest way to do this, so we keep one contract with them moving.
So it's cleaner?
I, probably in my, my mind, yes. It, it's easier to have one contract and you amend it as you go forward.
Yep.
I agree with that, yeah, this is not, this is something that you see a lot when you're, again, when, as, as things happen, you, you, you amend things as you need, and, and it just keeps in place that structure that was there already when, when and if we need that, and allows us to, to also engage them in this additional pursuit without having multiple contracts with the same company with the borough. It just, it keeps it a little cleaner, for sure.
So the 4,500 a month for January, February, and March, do we have hourly rates on top of that then for their work? Or is this?
Their hourly rates are listed back.
The hourly rate, rates are in the contract, which is again, why we simply just amend it and keep moving, so everything in the original contract stays the same.
So what's the 4,500 listed for January, February, and March?
That's the money we spent doing the initial work for the communications piece for the airport.
Okay. So anything going forward with branding and, and logos will be separate from this price?
Correct.
We've already spent this money, you're saying?
That was the time they needed to get up to speed, familiar with that project and, and begin their, their work to build the communication pieces that we would start to use. We anticipated having the purchase agreement for the airport probably at this meeting or the next meeting. So we, we were ramping up quickly, which is why, when I brought this forward, we had the urgency of, of getting them on board so that the timing of their, their work would line up with the signing of the purchase agreement. We ran into a, a legal situation with the purchase agreement that puts everything on hold for a few months. So rather than cancel the whole contract, we amended to use that time and energy right now to do the branding in this gap, if you will, and money. And then we'll re-engage them when we're ready. So it just keeps things moving for us, rather than dropping and starting and dropping again.
So we've made a January payment, so, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, and we've made a February payment?
Yep.
Yes. So, uh, the 13,500 is the total cost anticipated for the brand development?
One-time fee for this one project, correct?
Okay, all right. So included in that 4,500 in the brand development is all the research in the back, back end, uh, up-to-speed, uh, knowledge, work that they had done for the PR program that they're not going to go ahead and just...
Just now redirect that energy, and, and we probably realize some savings in the total branding package then by having them, already having them up to speed.
So I wonder what the, uh, what would the, uh, upfront work is done now for, uh, understanding the needs of the borough and the message that the borough requires? I wonder what the PR, the three-month PR program would cost us moving forward since some of that upfront work is already done. It's probably not going to be 13.5, I would want them to re-quote that.
Okay.
Well, and we've, we've not really seen a product yet, we've not seen the work.
No, it's been nothing released yet.
Okay.
No, because we haven't, we haven't moved forward again on the, on the purchase agreement of the airport.
So we don't really know if we're satisfied with what they've done before we're voting for them to move ahead with creating a logo and a brand, or?
I am, I am satisfied with the work that I've been able to do with them. Thus, I felt comfortable and following the direction the council gave me at the January meeting to ask them to put the proposal together during our workshop on communication, that's what I brought forward.
I would just ask that you renegotiate. I understand her question. The thing is, they've already started background work, compiling their notes and their information, getting their headspace in the right place.
Mm-hmm.
There's really nothing produced quite yet for us to see. They could maybe put together a report, but I don't think we're quite ready for that yet. I understand what he's saying and understanding the process. Uh, but here again, I don't want to see duplicity, paying for something that's already been paid for once. It's 13.5 was the original cost for three months with the upfront work. Now we're taking that upfront work and applying it to something else. We, when we contract for three months, next time for PR, since we're not doing it now, I want that removed. I want that upfront work that they've already completed against the PR work taken out of the next upcoming PR work when we're ready. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I, I will get back with them and then bring a revised contract to the next meeting. So you can table this right now until the next meeting.
Is it my making sense?
Um, I, I'm a little confused. We, we contracted them for a year. The first three months, we paid for the retainer slash they were going out and doing research on Columbia for their campaign. Because we lost that 4,500 hours.
No, it, it.
No, I'm about to say.
We spent it, yes.
As Shanks said, we didn't see anything back. But the reality of it is, we're now also saying the, the project that we were going to use them for has been delayed. But they're still under retainer. So we're paying that money the way.
No, we're, we're pausing the retainage fee. We're not paying that for the next few months.
Right, what exactly, what Mark did was, he stopped that 1,500 hours a month and put it in, put that money into a branding addendum. So that we're still working with Gavin, but the money stops. So it's not like...
So my misunderstanding?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think, in other words, in the three months we're going to take something to do this branding, we may settle or move forward with the project and bring it back in on the project. And then it'll just, the money will just keep, the tanks will keep flowing as is.
With the 1,500 dollars.
Right.
Okay. Okay, I understand. Thank you for clearing that up for me.
It's just, it's just, it's just, we're actually getting something.
Yes.
Right now, for the next three months, we probably wouldn't get anything per se, because we were delayed on that, on the project.
I understand.
And had we not, we negotiated to pause it, we'd have been paying the retainer anyway.
Or just to cancel, cancel the contract, and we, we would just have to have our 30, whatever that is in the contract, the termination notice.
Right, right.
So rather than waste that money, we're just redirecting those funds to, to this project.
I got it, thank you.
Yep. So do you still want to go back and, and renegotiate the fee, or can we move forward?
I think when it's time to start the PR, sure, why not?
Okay. At that point, we'll renegotiate.
You might think the work's great, you might not like the work, I don't know.
Okay.
Might not work well together, we might work splendidly, who knows? But sure.
Good, okay.
All right, so.
So do we need, oh, wait, I have a question.
So we have, um, the motion to authorize the manager... I have a motion by councilperson Burgard, a second by councilperson Kaufman, to authorize the manager to sign addendum number one to the contract with Gavin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
Howard, do you vote?
All right, hit the button again, no?
No.
I think we need to wait.
So it's four, two, am I correct?
Four, two.
Okay.
Next. Could I have a motion to consider the appointment of Terry Ann Dautrich as a regular member of the zoning hearing board?
Salute.
And a second.
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 I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Litter, to consider the appointment of Terry Ann Dautrich as a regular member of the zoning hearing board.
Can I just correct that? And, and because we're doing it by resolution, um, your action is actually to approve Resolution Number 21-1.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Um, the motion is to approve Resolution 20-1, appointing Terry Ann...
21-1.
21-1, appointing Terry Ann Dautrich as a regular member of the zoning hearing board. This, the... The vacancy was created by the resignation of Jonathan Lutz to join the, the Harvard, um, board.
Mm-hmm.
So this is, uh, filling in with one of our alternates. Does anyone have any questions or comments or concerns? No? So I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman and a second by councilperson Litter to approve Resolution 2021-01, appointing Terry Ann Dautrich as a regular member of the zoning hearing board. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
So just a, a, a quick note going forward. Um, to remove some of the confusion on the boards, we, we're going to be asking that all board appointments be made by resolution so we have a, a tracking of when they were made and, and when they were appointed. So we have clarity in that whole process going forward.
And, um, just want to make sure that we know when she will be filling Jonathan's term, so we have to make sure we know when that expires and we should let Terry know when that expires. All right? And since Terry was the first alternate, that means for anyone listening, if you are interested in serving as an alternate on the zoning hearing board, um, please, please let, um, someone here at the Borough Hall know. You can email, actually email me, Heather Zep, or any other member of council. We can, uh, make sure that need gets put forward. Next, could I have a motion to consider the appointment of Pam, Pam Williams to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board? No motion. All right. That motion does not come forward. New business. Ooh, Derek, you're getting up here. Could I have a motion to approve the Mill Street CDBG improvement for bid?
Salute.
And a second.
Second.
Motion by councilperson Fitzgerald, second by councilperson Kaufman, to approve the Mill Street CDBG improvement for bid.
Every year, Heather.
I know, I trip on it every year.
Every year you're not saying that, it's not a good year, that's good money we get.
I know it is, I just, I trip on it every year.
Okay. Mark, I did email you, it doesn't get, uh, that's easier for you to pull off. I know you've got a...
No. This computer's very slow, so.
I'm going to set this up.
Nice.
I'm going to set this up in front of the camera, so that everybody can see it. So, oh, we can see it, sorry, Heather, you're going to be a little blocked here.
That's okay.
And then if you guys can pop these, we'll pass out. So as part of the CDBG funding, one of the requirements is to have a whole team. And we're going to use that time right now. It's also good practice when we're doing a project of this magnitude.
Sorry, Howard, we're interrupting your men.
So basically what we're doing on, on Mill...
I'm sorry.
Basically what we're doing here...
Can you grab the mic so they can hear you?
Yeah, okay, that's...
Just grab it, you can walk around if you want.
Yeah. All right, I'll, I'll stay at the box here. So, so what we're doing here on Mill Street is, this is an extension of the Second Street Project that was completed last year. Uh, we are taking the project from the Lawrence, uh, Street intersection and running it all the way on Mill Street up to the Fourth Street intersection. So you've basically got two blocks here of additional curb and sidewalk work. Uh, we have already had a site meeting, uh, with, with Bruce Murray, who is the owner of Elite Energy, basically the entire southern part of this street. Uh, he was very cooperative in the first, uh, first project, and we, you know, took some time with him and made sure that we understood how his site worked before we laid this out. Uh, so what we're proposing on the northern side of the street, it's a pretty traditional curb and sidewalk project. Uh, we have a couple driveways that were, that are shown there with a darker hatch. Uh, otherwise, it is your standard four-inch thick concrete. Uh, we usually do about a six-inch tall curb here in the borough, which works well, uh, with our streets and with our tie-ins on the houses. Uh, if you start at the corner there where the Ambeds Building is, that sidewalk was actually recently replaced, so we're not tearing that whole thing up. We're going to leave that sidewalk in place and then pick up right at the end there and start moving towards Fourth Street. But right now, that whole section from Fourth, excuse me, from the Ambeds moving towards Fourth, it's the worst part of the street. It's, it's old brick sidewalk, it's wide open, there's no curb. Uh, so visually, that's where you're going to see the, the most improvement on the road. Uh, we're going to have a nice drive, defined driveway next to the Ambeds Building as opposed to just the openness that's in there right now. Um, and then again, basically the rest of the way, it's just going to be vertical curb and, and sidewalk on the north side. Give you that traditional street look here. On the southern side, uh, you can see, starting where Mark is, we have some garages, we have the, uh, parking lot for Elite Energy. We're going to tie right into the parking lot. It is not our intention to touch the Mill Street intersection, which is functioning beautifully after our last paving job out there. That was a drainage problem for years that, that is now draining and working very well. So we're not touching that, uh, with this project. Uh, as we start moving up the street here, we'll tie into the parking lot of Elite Energy, we'll pave up to the driveways, and then we start to run into where the fence is along Elite Energy. What we're proposing to do is install a, just a vertical curb. We don't want to install sidewalk on that side. Uh, there, there is no reason, uh, for pedestrians to be on that side of Mill Street. There's nowhere to walk to. So it's not our intention to install sidewalk on the southern side of the road, just a vertical curb, uh, with a planning strip behind it that Mr. Murray has agreed to maintain. So we're going to work with him and determine whether he wants grass or mulch or what he wants in there. But it will give a little bit of beautification to the chain link fence that you see there. It'll also better define the edge of the road because so many people are parking there right now. And we're not eliminating parking, we're just organizing it a little bit better. So people aren't parking right up against the fence. Uh, we're also going to encourage parking to not block the driveways into Elite Energy, which is currently an issue. So as you move up the street towards the Elite's, uh, main entrance, you'll see there's a little bit of a flare-out, um, on that curb. That's the, that's to discourage people from parking closer to the intersection. Excuse me, closer to the entrance. As you keep moving up the street on the southern side, um... you'll notice, if you've all been out there, there are five or six boulders right now blocking the side of the building. As you come down on, I believe that's, what street is that chain up on?
Southern.
Excuse me, thank you. As you come down on Third Street, we have this kind of run it out of grass with these boulders in place. We're gonna remove those and install a true vertical curb there to provide some protection to that building. We're gonna pull the curb back a little bit so that we make sure we do have enough turning radius for the trucks that are using that street. But again, it'll be a lot cleaner when it's all set and done. Mark, I can see where your cursor is right now, jumping back to the north side of the street. One of the biggest things with these CDBG grants are ADA improvements. So everywhere we have a driveway crossing, everywhere we have a street crossing, that's going to be brought up to current ADA standards with new ramps and proper sloping on all of your curbs and sidewalks. And that's basically it in a nutshell. We are not proposing to install curb all the way from Elite Energy up to Fourth Street because we have a driveway opening there that's currently paved right out to the road. And we also have a nice, real nice head row that kind of leans out over the curb, over the street there. We just didn't see any point in ripping all that out to change that. It seems fine now, it works to define the streets. So that's our project. And I'm just here to present that to you and then ask if anybody has any questions on what they see or suggestions for what they'd like to see.
I just have a question. Where you have like the, like the overs of the other parcels, what does the N slash F mean?
Means now or formerly. When we do a D search, it'll come up with the owner of the deed, but that's only as accurate as the date you pull it. So that covers us in case the property changes hands, you can still figure out whose it is. All right, I'll sit down. Thank you all for your time.
All right, I have a... Excuse me, motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve the Mill Street CDBG improvement for bid. All in favor? Aye, aye. Anyone opposed? I have to do that when I have a man's clause, I've never been able to do it here.
So those who questioned, CDBG is Community Development Block Grant. It's federal funding money that comes through the Community Development Block Grant Program.
And it has to be used in certain neighborhoods based on-
Has to be qualified neighborhoods and certain projects that you can use it on. So we are a CDBG-qualified community, so therefore we are eligible for those funds. And it's just, it's good to see those funds being used to help the general population and the public like this. So to me, this is a great use of these funds to benefit the community as a whole.
We've done a significant number of streets in the last couple of years with CDBG funds.
Yeah.
I expect to wait at least twenty years in a row.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
And this stretches out our liquid fuels money and it stretches out our capital fund money to use those funds as well. So thank you.
Next, could I have a motion to approve the facility use request from women of the moose?
Seven.
And a second?
Second.
A motion by Councilperson Linder and a second by Councilperson Fitzgerald to approve the facility's use request from the women of the moose.
You're the woman.
They are, they are.
Yeah. Is that the moose? Are you the moose, I really?
I have my moose being scrawny. I can't see that part. All right, so, any want to use the Columbia Crossing Lawn and Meadow? Have we checked, Mark, to see if there's any other events at Columbia Crossing that day?
Yeah, so anytime we get an application for that area, we check with Hope and make sure she signs off on it, they were clear, so she knows what's going on and knows what to expect when she's done.
For prep vendors and food trucks, I have another question. Since this is... I don't know, would they need to make sure the food trucks due to transient?
So we, yes, but we allow food trucks in those areas because it's a special event.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So we'll go through all the licensing with them for that process.
All right.
This is the easy way to get food trucks in and around town, this is doing by special event.
Yep. Does any, did any staff or administration have an issue with this, Mark?
Nope, we're good.
Yep, we're good.
I would only say pending proof of insurance.
Yep, we have it right here. Excellent. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments or concerns?
Looks like an easy one.
Yep.
I do have a comment.
Yes.
And I'm glad you're doing it very fair. So, have you reached out to any other organizations in the borough for like a bigger event instead of just this event?
Well, we actually, we started off, we were going to do food trucks and what we're doing now is we're going to contact the local other organizations, it's like the Moose Lodge, and offer the food events to them. Like the Lions Club, the Elks, everyone that's in trouble, you know.
I'm not saying just, Dr. Park, you're talking from Saturday, basically nine to five, nine to three. And what I'm saying is, would you mind if I reached out to other organizations and maybe try to make a weekend of it to draw more people to that event and also to Columbia?
That sounds great. I'm all for it.
I'd like to see a start, but when we do events, big events like that, that we make a weekend out of it. So it's more of an experience than just one group doing a little thing off the, you know, not off to the side, but their little thing. Get everybody involved and make it a bigger thing.
You know, the issue with that is though, if we book a hundred vendors and you, on the other side, book thirty vendors for the same day, there probably won't be enough space.
I'm not talking about the ballpark. I'm not talking about Saturday. I would say-
It's a special weekend.
Yeah, I like to start seeing bigger events.
We figured us several people in anyhow to go to the antique shops and stuff.
Absolutely.
And they will do that.
Right.
Just in their parking and parking and walking down or parking and then on to the other stores in town. But they will bring business to Columbia.
Absolutely.
I thought we spoke with Hope, we've already booked the second date for October 30th, that we want this to continue as an annual event. So we have the spring and the fall event, primarily crafts. I own from here in town. So like crafting is my thing and I love the moose, so I need to contribute help. But they obviously hit everybody. So, but I'm really big into the whole community support and the town. So there are going to be quite a few businesses from town that have already booked that they're going to be of a stand down with us.
Wonderful.
Can I pass a referral?
Yeah.
Can I do that?
Yeah.
Here's a referral.
So while he's doing this, just a reminder that one of the reasons we're moving forward on the branding is one of the big recommendations that came out of the parking study was wayfinding signs. And I didn't want to spend money on wayfinding signs until we had locked in what our branding is. And the idea is that we have these type of events down at the crossing and then people park once and then the sign will say, you know, within a ten-minute walk, you can get to this part of town and see what's around. And if you don't know the town, you're not about to just, a lot of people aren't gonna just wander up and just say, hey, what's down around the next corner? But if you know something that most likely you're gonna want to go see, you can say, oh, that's right, hey, that Hinkles, I've heard about that, that's a good restaurant. Oh, I wanted to go look at that antique shop over here. Come on, that's only an eight-minute walk. We can do that, come on, kids, let's go up up here, we've done the craft show, let's go walk into town and see what's there. And so the whole idea is to, when people are coming into town, not doing one shop and come in and then leave again, but come in, walk around, enjoy the event, and then wander out. And I'll be blunt, people coming into town come in to spend money. And so I want them coming in and spending money in our shops in town as well. So, thank you, Eric, thank you for this idea, is that we're gonna keep pushing these things out and encouraging people to come and patronize our shops and support our local businesses.
All right. And then, you know, you said you've been in contact with Hope. You know, if you need anything else, you need to make any amendments, just let us know.
And personally, I invite anybody from the council to stop at the Moose through Nineteenth of East Street to see what we're all about and see what we do for the community.
Thank you.
So stop in, anybody.
Thanks, we all have wanted to, but I thought it was a man's thing. Heather, I'll sign you in. Okay, okay.
Actually, the Moose is a family center. And we take pride in being a family center. So we have Thursday, every Thursday night, and we have meals Friday night, Thursday and Friday night.
All right, I'll come down Thursday night? Not this Thursday, I have a meeting.
That's all right.
Next Thursday.
The offer's there.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Linder and a second by Councilperson Fitzgerald to approve the facility's use request from the women of the moose. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Next, could I have a motion to approve the 2021 paving projects?
Seven.
And a second? All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve the 2021 paving projects. Any comment on this one?
Yeah, this is just to advertise for the period for big, using a ten dot nine sixty-three plate form. It's seventeen tons to nine and a half tonne here. Super heavy and two hundred and fifty tons of twenty-five tonne here. And this is all for the paving projects that the Borough Hall performs.
I saw a list. All right.
Thank you, Russ.
I did. And across the street. I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve the 2021 paving projects. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? And by approving them, that means you're gonna put it out for bid, correct?
Yeah, so we advertised the course usually around the twelfth and seventeenth.
Excellent. Next, could I have a motion to authorize staff to begin the review process of an ordinance to amend Chapter two twenty, Section thirty-one regarding fences in the Columbia Borough.
Fail it.
I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson McGar to authorize staff to begin the review process of an ordinance to amend Chapter two twenty, Section thirty-one fences. This was one of the things that we had been looking at last year. There are some, there are some conflicts in our code surrounding the two-foot setback rule. So we would like to get that cleaned up and so forth. But before we can just do that, since it's, has to do with the planning and stuff like that, has to go to our planning commission, has to also go to the Lancaster County Planning Commission for input and so forth and so on. So what we're looking for tonight is to authorize staff to just begin this process for us. It's not voting one, the amendment, it's authorizing them to start the process. The actual ordinance, if designed, would come forward at a later time for a reading.
So just to make what Heather said a little bit more clear, as, you know, the first part of this process is it would get sent to your planning commission and then the county planning commission. And they'll each offer comments and recommendations either for approval or disapproval. And so, you know, if they don't like what they see here, they may offer some suggestions. So this could very well change from what you see in here. Again, you're not voting on anything final here, just to get those recommendations to see if this is something that should move forward.
So this might feel like a slight change in process, and it probably is. But moving forward, when we bring ordinances forward, especially that's amending policy or laws, we'll bring it forward to request us to start the process. You guys will authorize or just kill it on the table. You can say, no, we're not ready for this, this is not something we want to do now. And it ends there. If you agree that at least you can get feedback and comments, we'll run it through the review process and then bring it back to council for review, then final action, whether you adopt or reject it at that time. So I feel like this is more transparent so that you see what's coming and then you see it again when it comes before you.
All right, and plus, there's no sense in you guys working on something.
Right, you're authorizing us to spend time and energy, but I want to give you enough information so we draft an initial ordinance for you guys to see what the changes we're talking about. And maybe in this, you might say, well, let's not do just this. We might want to look at two other areas. So this can change and then we'll finally advertise the final version and that's the one we'll bring forward for adoption.
Is this time for me to ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you, President Zink. My question was, and I know last year you and I talked about this, information about fencing and stuff. I do favor the two-foot rule and I can tell you the reason why. Because it gives you access to the other side of the fence and if you have a problem with a neighbor, then you run into a civil situation. The other thing is, I don't know how, and I can tell you right now, I can show you properties, that fences were put in and those survey stakes were shown. And I don't know how you can put a fence in without having a survey. I had to do it and I don't know how you can put a fence in without showing proof where your property line is. That prevents any kind of civil suit from a neighbor or anything, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
I want to make sure we add that in here when it goes, that it will be allowed on the property line, you know, with the permit and then... I don't know how to say that, if it's part of the permit process to show a survey?
So, yeah, I absolutely agree with that. And I also like the idea of people being able to put a fence right on their property. Keeping it two feet in, in the narrow borough lots that we do have. You lose two feet of your yard, if your neighbor doesn't put a fence up, they in effect gain two feet of your property that they, in a sense, have, I don't want to say free use of, but it gives a visual appearance of that their property goes all the way over to that fence. And that's created conflicts in the past. Unless both property owners put the fence up.
I agree with you, yeah.
And then you have a-
I agree with you, Mark.
Yeah, then you have a four-foot no-man's land in the middle that who owns and who maintains? And it creates a very awkward, uncomfortable situation. I think people have the right, if you will, to the enjoyment of their property and it's hard when you're fenced out of it. So run it on the property line. The rules remain that the good side, if you will, the finished side faces your neighbor. If you want to- If you want the finished side on yours, you have to get a fence that's finished on two sides. And I think that creates a much better environment. The maintenance issue remains, I get that. We encourage civility between neighbors. But it's often difficult, you run into problems when you require your neighbor to get an easement and if they deny it, then how do you put your fence up on your property line? So that's where we are. I think it's as fair to do it. We're hoping for civility. But in fairness to the property owners, I think this is the best way to do it. The problem that we have, to be clear, is subsection four of this says the fence can be on the property line. Subsection six says it needs to be setback two feet. When you have a conflict in the code, and Evan can explain this better than I can, the benefit of the conflict goes to the applicant. So we are constantly running into these tensions. And it's very difficult to write code that you don't, at some point, miss something because we get focused in on something and you realize, oh, there might be another contest somewhere else. So in every ordinance you see, you'll see repeal at the end saying, if it goes into conflict, then it doesn't apply.
Yep.
Yeah.
I agree with you. I don't see anything wrong with being on property line. And like I said two years ago, there's a lot of row homes in town that you couldn't put a fence two feet away from your property, and I agree with you with that. So that creates another situation. But I'm looking at the property owner, if he's going to put his fence on a property line, there should be something in there that says the neighbor cannot stop him from maintaining that side of the fence. Or you're just looking at pushing these people into a civil suit. I'm telling you, I've been there.
Okay.
And I'd like to work with to prevent that for the taxpayer in town. You know, that if he puts a fence on his property line, you should have the right to maintain both sides, whether the neighbor likes it or not. And I don't know how you do that, that's why you have an attorney.
That's what I'm thinking about right now, Howard, is how we would do that. But it's certainly something I think we'll probably look into. Because you are absolutely correct. If, you know, when you have these things right on the property lines, it could create conflicts both ways. We've seen it, you guys I know have seen it, you've heard it in previous council meetings, how having it two feet off the property line can cause problems and how, you know, having it right on the property line can. So we've just got to, we've got to look at this and I think, you know, if we could figure out a way to, in the ordinance, say, this fence is on the property line, they have the right to maintain that fence on either side. I think it would be a good idea to do that. I'm just not sure that we can do that, but we'll try to figure something out.
Thank you.
Yep.
When we set about adding in there to have that they have to have a survey as a part of the permitting process, is it also, should we also say that if they are replacing an existing fence, there is no need for a survey? As long as it...
No, because you'd have to be sure that the existing fence was placed on the property line. Unfortunately, it adds cost to your fencing, but you need to survey to come out and locate the corner pins. And if they don't exist, you know, set pins. And that then guarantees, as good as the survey is, that the fence is now on the property line.
I was just trying to think of people that have had a fence for years and years and years and they need to replace it with, you know, something and it's been in the same spot all that time.
And it's not uncommon that when you pull the survey out, you realize that the people installing the fence went off course a little bit and now you've taken over four inches, eight inches, and the number of inches really becomes a moot point. You've taken over your neighbor's property. So what we say is that the fence really should be in the post or on your property, so the outside edge of the fence is on or inside your property line. So that you are in no way approaching onto your neighbor's property.
The issue becomes with, if you're going to require a formal survey, there, if you could back me up, you may spend more on that survey than you spend on the fence. Very easily, so...
But to get someone to come out and find the...
Yeah, yeah.
I can pay right now, just the property history for me, it was $1,500 to do the survey on our property.
So...
But that's something to think about. Regardless of whether it's as much as the fence itself or not, it's going to add significant cost to somebody who wants to put up a fence for their dog or whatever the case may be. So, and I mean, I understand the importance of it, absolutely. Because you don't want to be the neighbor with a, you know, I mean, in a lot of these row home situations, you're talking 14 to 18 feet maybe. So if you lose any part of that, that's a large part of your yard. So we'll have to figure out a way to balance those two things, I think.
You can do it off a deed plot rather than a full survey, which would then, I would think, save some money. And then have someone come out and just locate the corner pins. If they exist. Yeah.
I could show you, I could show you two, three years ago, a fence that was put in six feet off the property line.
Yeah. It happened, yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments or concerns on that? I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, a second by Councilperson McGar to authorize staff to begin the review process of ordinance to amend Chapter 220, Section 31, fences. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Started on that. Next, presentation and acceptance of reports. Community development, Eric.
I'd like to acknowledge the receipt of the zoning hearing board and the planning commission report for January 2021.
Finance, there is nothing on finance. This meeting, as we said before, will be starting the new process of authorizing the bills with the next council meeting. Legislation. Reminder, there is a borough council vacancy. We will be accepting letters of intent to fill that position up until Monday, February 22. Those letters can be emailed to me at hzink@columbiapa.net or they can be delivered to the Borough Hall, 308 Locust Street, to my attention and I'll get those. So if you want to serve, come on in, let us know. And then, public interviews will be held at the next council meeting on February 23. We also have alternate positions available on the zoning hearing boards. If you're interested in those, let us know. And we do have some open spots on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. If you're interested in serving on Parks and Rec, please let us know that as well. Rec personnel.
Okay, I'd like to accept the resignation of codes manager Paul Olson. Mark, would you like to explain how that open position would be handled?
Absolutely.
Or do we have to vote to accept the resignation?
It's acknowledgement, I would think.
Yeah, I don't think you need to accept, yeah, he's not elected.
Thank you.
And that was effective, what date? The 29th?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, January 29th.
What we have been able to do is, in talking with Sharon Sino, who we've hired as our planning and zoning manager, is similar to what I've done in the past. Sharon, in her past jobs, was what, down in Florida where she worked, was a development services manager. So in the past, she covered planning, zoning, historic, business licensing. They do that down in Florida. So this is not new to her, to manage multiple divisions within a department, if you will. So she was ready and willing to step up and manage the code office, which will result in a 5% increase in her salary to take on additional responsibilities. That will result in a savings to our budget under the personnel and not, and having not a need to, having not a need, it's getting late. And not having a need to backfill that immediately, we can realize those savings. As we are getting back into slowly doing in-house inspections, et cetera, believe that the demand on the code department will grow. We'll keep an eye on it. If we feel like we need somebody else, I'd rather hire another code officer with more boots on the ground than another manager. So I think to backfill with more code officers, should that need arise. So we'll keep an eye on things, we'll see how things are moving forward. Should we need to do that, I'll work with Sharon. We'll look at what's appropriate and what's needed and move forward in changing the organizational chart at that time. But moving forward at this point, it seems like this system is working out very well. And again, hopefully, we can improve our level of service without adding any additional people to the staff.
I just have one other question about that. And you and I touched on it briefly about who would be doing the fire inspection since Paul was charged with that.
Yes. So to do fire inspections, you must be certified under the ICC and/or International Code Council and the UCC, the Uniform Construction Code. If you want to know why, people like us, like Alphabet Supers, we live in it all day. We will have to stop those inspections at this time until this time is, we either a fire inspector comes on or if someone talked about training, if one of the volunteers wants to take that on and gets certified as an inspector, they're willing to work with us, we could bring that back on again. But for now, that whole process will be paused. It's not a requirement for boroughs, it's something that we did because we had the staff to do it. Most, a lot of boroughs don't offer that at all. So it's not like we're taking away something that's required under the borough code. This is, we had an extra service for a while that was a benefit to our community and someday we'll try to bring that back.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, appreciate that.
Thank you. Public Works and Property.
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to acknowledge the receipt of the Public Works and Property Report for January. Mr. Gray, do you have an opportunity to brag on...
Um, I don't know, let's talk about snow. So it's all online right now.
Something come on Sunday, you said, what?
Yeah, we've got, I don't know, the next seven to 10 days, we probably got four or five opportunities here. At this point, nothing else huge, but just more nuisance stuff, which requires, requires overtime and it requires anti-icing materials, so...
Love that anti-icing material. I love that anti-icing material.
Yes, it's a great pool. It's, and that's what it is, it's just a pool in a little box. It buys us a little time at the beginning of these events. It buys you an hour or two before you have to get out there to interact more material for a little time, start flying also. It really helps if you're before 11:00 in the morning, start on it. Gives you an opportunity to maybe not have to throw guys in until they get there at 7:00. So that's kind of nice. The event that started last Sunday, that was a little challenging. Typically, when these events come through, they're eight to 12-hour deals. About two and a half, maybe three days. Kind of gets tough. I guess we did kind of log out, but I believe we got about 10 inches. And there was some forecast that we could get up to a foot and a half or something, but it's all worked out pretty good. So right now, we've got ample supply of materials down there. Clothing's all in good shape, so we're ready for the next battle. At least I don't want to let the guys off.
Jake, I don't know if you heard at our last meeting last week, but the mayor passed along, and I want to make sure you heard it, passed along your guys, there was a public thank you from SVE MS for you guys keeping their driveway clear during these snow events so that they have an easier time getting in and out. So, thank you. That's what we all, we all want to work for everyone to be saved, so thank you.
My good day. Market House Project, CHI is beginning to plan a grand opening event for the end of May. And if you're on social media, you should look for the Columbia Borough Market House posts. They're starting to show the approved vendors, Facebook, Instagram, or their website.
Oh, I also saw the Gypsy Kitchen post. They said they are going to soon start doing takeout out there, so...
That brings me to a question I had about, seems like a good time to ask, since she broke that up. I too saw the Gypsy Kitchen advertising. And I wondered where we're at with the agreement and how much rent they're paying. Do we know that yet? Because I know you were updating the agreement or something, there were some changes.
It wasn't anything to do with the rent. We've just got to figure out, because that building is going to get taxed, we've got to figure out where that money is going to come from. And part of it is really going to depend on what that building is assessed at, how much of, how much that's going to cost. Because there is, in the master agreement between the borough and CHI, there is a $65,000 allowance for, I'm not sure exactly what it was for, but maintenance and those sort of things with the building. So depending on how much those taxes are going to end up being, we'll see if that can be used for part of it or how that works. So, but I don't think the rent is going to change. We're not getting, right now, for the first five years, from what I understand, the borough is not getting any revenue out of this. Yeah.
Do you know when the assessment will be done?
They have the CLO, so I would assume that they'll be out there at some point. The assessment office, if they haven't already been.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
And just so everybody's clear, we have a signed contract with CHI to manage that. That was done last year. So they are free and clear now to move forward and do this activity. Evan and I are just working with them then to just amend it.
Yeah.
Part of the amendment was driven by the fact that the signature pages have to be updated to reflect the current leaderships. And then, since we're opening, we're looking at some of these other things, just to make some tweaks and adjustments to it to make it clear. One of the adjustments, for example, is there was some ambiguity as to the management of the security system inside the building. And what we are doing is modeling after the agreement we had with Columbia Crossings, where Hope and her team, they manage the security in the building because they're the day-to-day operators of the facilities. We're running it to them to manage it. So the security system that was installed in there will be operated out of the Market House manager's office. And there's no ties over here, so we don't have to get involved in that. So when vendors change hands and stuff, it's their responsibility to ensure that the key fobs are turned back in and shut down. And I have access over there and Kelsey and I are meeting on a regular basis now to ensure that everything's running smoothly. And if there's any problems that she has, we can jump in and help out, as we do down at the crossings, still our building. But the day-to-day running of that, my confidence in them grows continuously as we see them operating and see them getting excited. And Fran can share, we sit on the committee that's reviewing the stands. We're down to becoming very selective now because at this point, it's looking like the stands will be completely full come opening day. And we're not going to have a lot of gaps in there. That's assuming that everyone who has looked at it and agrees, then signs on the dotted line and actually comes forward and gets things together. But we are excited to know that the stand holders that have been approved and have signed their contracts now are starting to get in there and look at their space and figure out how they want to build their stands out. Gypsy Kitchens is extremely excited. I get excited talking to Ed. When he comes in here, his passion is food and cooking and making good, fresh, healthy food, using fresh ingredients. And so he is very excited. And so he is very excited about bringing his restaurant here. He'll do a soft opening with curbside pickup once he gets everything in, set up, and gets the, through the Department of Ag and LNI inspections. He's ready to get things fired up and do a soft opening with pickup here in town, which draws people into our community. So people will be coming into town to pick up delicious meals served there. So it's a win-win for us to get that up and going. And then, we got excited about talking about some special events, if you will. Grand opening that Fran mentioned. There's been talk now about relaunching kind of last Friday of the month and, you know, maybe having a special outside, closing Sadie Lane in the nice weather, using that space there to bring in additional temporary stands. You know, maybe some vendors who weren't quite ready to do a full blowout of a full stand, they can come in once a month, have a stand outside where the rest of the market's open, and we draw people downtown. We get our shops to have sidewalk sales and other things. And, you know, we do like Eric you were talking about earlier, we get people in there downtown to come here and shop and spend money. So that's, it, very, very excited. It's going to be on all of us. You know, it takes a village, as they say, to get these things going. It's going to be on all of us to make sure. It's one thing to do a grand opening and get a lot of energy and synergy and excitement for the grand opening. It's a different beast altogether to then sustain that over time. And that's really our goal now, is to make this sustainable over time. But I'm very excited, can't wait for it to open.
Well, I saw some planters in there, they all have plants in yet, but they, oh my gosh, they're gorgeous. I love them.
So the idea with those is when the weather gets nice, when they come in to open the market, they roll them outside and that'll be like the little siren song to attract people to come inside, show that it's open.
I still think they should put earth, they should separate one out and plant herbs in it.
That discussion is happening right now. He's thinking about whether he can do that and harvest right out of the, yep.
I was talking to Kelsey about that, I said, he should plant herbs in here.
And I've been to restaurants like that where you see the chefs wander out and they flip off some herbs and they go back in the kitchen and throw them in, and that's what he's all about. So he's thinking about how he can do that.
Awesome.
Great big arrow garden.
All right. Safety.
Thank you, President Stink. Yes, in your packets, you should have public safety reports for the Columbia Borough Police Department and the Columbia SVE MS. You were emailed the Columbia Borough Fire Department report for January 2020. It will be posted on the website for public access. There's also the codes compliance report for January 2021 and the EMOC report for 2021. Did I say 2020 earlier? Let me have it. If I did, I'm going to say 2021. But I would like to share something out of the EMA report, if I may. I think this is good public information. There's been a strengthening of the masking order. I know it's inconvenient, but such is life right now. It has been ordered on April. Mask are required to be worn indoors and outdoors if you're away from your home. When outdoors, a mask must be worn if you're not able to remain physically distant within six feet from someone not in your house. When indoors, masks are required even if you're physically distant from memberships, members not in your household. This means even if you are six feet apart, you need to wear a mask. This order applies to every indoor facility, including homes, retail establishment, gyms, doctors, offices, publics, transportation, and everywhere food is prepared, packaged, or served. So we are not relaxing these requirements at all. They're still in force and, you know, it is winter, we're all tight. Let's try to keep each other safe, and that's all I have, thank you.
All right, staff reports and comments.
Okay, so you guys all have the report that I prepared for you that we talked about at the workshop that I will, that I'll be trying to do for you every week. Several of these items we've already hit on this evening. I'll just touch on a couple more that are on here. We are working with Comcast and the Cohen Wall Group, who was engaged by prior Borough Council to finalize your cable franchising agreement. We had a conference call with them today. So it looks like there's just a couple of things that need to get done process-wise to get that, to get that agreement finalized. I've been working on kind of ancillaryly, again, the bond refinancing. You have bond counsel, as well as Jamie Schlesinger from PFM. But I've been reviewing all the documents as they come in and as we move through the transaction, I'll be issuing an opinion of counsel letter that, you know, just kind of states that you guys are able to enter into all those agreements. So my role in that has been kind of limited because of the speciality in a bond counsel, but just wanted to touch on that. And I don't think there's too much else I need to talk about on there. But I did just want to say, as far as the bond refinancing, I go to a lot of municipal meetings and I think I was probably going to, between 12 and 14 in the last month. And what you guys did on that project, taking that, taking a little bit of a risk, spending a little bit of money upfront, but being able to save 1.25 million dollars, I don't think that I'm understating it by saying that you guys changed the financial course of this borough. You were in, I'll tell you, serious, serious trouble moving forward with those payments going up every year. And you guys deserve a pat on the back, is all I'll say. I see a lot of, I see a lot of this, and a lot of Borough councils would not have had the wherewithal and the initiative to take that on and get that done for you. So just wanted to say congratulations on that, and we're working hard to make sure that that is, that that's finished, so.
I saw the packet of papers on my desk today, it's like, oh my gosh.
My hand hurts thinking about signing all those.
I know.
Like buying a house.
Actually, I told him, I said, I think his packets are actually less than my, than my last three finances.
All right.
I don't have a speech about 1.25 million, but I'll give it a shot.
Well, this is disappointing.
I'm sorry, disappointing again, right?
He was at a meeting last night much longer than I was, he had to stay late.
I have less energy than Evan. So just a couple of things I'll highlight with your approval to proceed with the Mill Street bids, we will get that out to bid here in the next month. Based on my project timeline, we will have bids for you, your second meeting in March for that project. The other project that I'll be coming to you sooner rather than later with is the 944 bids for the concrete work. To get in front of Jake's paving work, we need to get those, all those ADA racks along the street he's going to pave upgraded so that we're in compliance. So we're preparing the specs right now. I might ask here in about two weeks, your next meeting, for authorization to proceed with that. I just, I didn't have the council brief ready to go tonight, but we're still planning on to get that out and get those racks in ahead of Jake, so.
Question, I'm just thinking about this. When are they coming back for the 780 block of?
We are, we are on a reinstated schedule for basically as soon as the weather approaches. So we want to make sure we're clear of any winter weather, the last thing we want to do is any precipitation coming down when we tear that tree back up. But yes, I haven't spoken to them in about a month or so, but every chance I spoke into them, we're going to come back in.
We got sent some cookies or something to make sure we.
I'd like to first, my opinion is we were, first of all, they've been fantastic through this whole thing, as you know, with UGI stringing us along as long as they did. They were very appreciative that we were willing to delay the entire project till the spring because originally, we were pushing to get the curb and sidewalk done in the fall. So they were appreciative that we were willing to just say, all right, come back once, tear the whole thing up once. So I anticipate they'll be willing to come in and work with us here and knock this out.
Good. To Per treasure, Mark, can you think of for us?
Sure. Three things. One, not to keep going back to this, but I want to just give kudos to Jake and his team for the hard work they did. It's very impressive for me to come in here and see the team working together as a team, getting stuff done, clearing the streets, pushing all the snow back. And then, when everyone is relaxing, saying, hey, we're all done, they go back out the next day and they start clearing the piles and making sure that their road is clean as possible. And I also want to thank all the residents who worked with us to get their cars off the street so that we can scrape back. And I know it's an inconvenience, but it's for your own personal safety that we can scrape back to as close to the curb as we can get and get all the snow removed. Because as Jake, the weatherman, knows, and I don't want to brag up too much, but he may have outpredicted some of our weather people, that you have to, you can't just rest, you have to realize that another one could be coming. And if we don't prepare everything and clean off as much as we can, then after a while, the street gets narrower and narrower because you had to run out of room to push the snow away. So they did an incredible job and working together as a team, working long hours to get all that in. And I really appreciate the hard work they put into doing that. Second, we got several concerns about broken glass in Macle Park. And I just want to loop back on that and let you know that there was follow-up done. Jake and his crews went out there, they did, they did go through that. And we do sweep through the parks on a regular basis and look for this type of stuff. So if any residents have any concerns or see anything that's of a concern to them, get it out to us. But please know that we take these concerns, we take these things very seriously, we do follow up, we do go out and check, and if there is a problem out there, we'll be taken care of as quickly and as speedily as possible, so. Just wanted to loop back on that. And finally, I just wanted to announce that you guys authorized a change in the code a while ago, and I think it was a very good one, to look at how code fine appeals are done. In the past, there was a hundred dollar fee, and that was the judge and jury, if you will, to look at those. And I know that raised some concern. So we had an appeal recently, and we pulled the appeal board together, and Councilperson Regard and Councilperson Kaufman joined me here for the appeals board. And I felt like the process was very good and went well. And I, if you guys would like to join in, I felt like that's a very appropriate way for us to hear that and to report back. And I think the comments and the feedback that this person got was very good. So thank you guys for jumping in and helping support that process. And with that, if you have any questions for me, that's all I have tonight.
All right. Upcoming meetings on Thursday to 11. We have a Parx and Rec Advisory Board meeting. Just a reminder, we do have two open positions on that board, so if you are interested in serving there, let one of us know. The heads of the plant ad hoc committee meeting is on 2/16 and followed, immediately followed by the Planning Commission meeting. PARC is scheduled for 2/17, and the Shade Tree Commission meets on 2/22, which is a Monday evening. Do our roundtable, start over here with Councilperson Regard, anything?
Yeah, I have two things, if you don't mind. First thing, just a reminder to council members that to take your FEMA classes, get your FEMA certs. They're in the email, they're pretty easy, take a few hours, that's for sure. But see if you can't finish them up by the end of the month, shoot them to me and we'll make sure the certification is getting in your file. Secondly, I want to acknowledge somebody in the borough. I'm guessing maybe 11, 12-year-old young lady and some friends. Her name's Amanda Brady. Saturday afternoon, saw her and her friends out in front of the police department, wondering what to do. They obviously needed something. And so I stopped and asked them if they needed help. And what they had was a set of car keys. They found the Jansen Park. They walked the whole way down from Jansen Park to come to the police department to turn in these keys. They didn't know whose they were. So I took the keys, did a little bit of sleuthing, figured out who they belonged to, and delivered them. And the guy was really, really grateful. I just wanted to personally acknowledge this young lady and her friends, thanking her for her act of kindness and her being a responsible citizen. That's how we make, we look out for each other. So thank you, Amanda Brady, and grateful for you.
Thank you.
I want to hear something like that. Gives me hope for the future. Councilperson Fitzgerald, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilperson Kaufman?
Just have one comment. The edible classroom is starting up this year again. They have a four-week schedule between Columbia Borough School District and the classroom. So they're going to do four one-week groups. They have one week of children sponsored already. So they're still looking for sponsors for the remaining three weeks. That's about 20 kids a week it's going to provide. I don't want to say training, but hands-on learning of planning food and stuff like that. The edible classroom is a very good program. Unfortunately, the borough is not allowed to support financially, but I know there's people in Columbia, between businesses and individuals, that look to help out. And I believe it's a good program, I just want to pay everybody's attention. So you can go to the website, it's theedibleclassroom.org, or that's better.
And, well, if you do talk to her, let her know that if she needs any compost or anything like that, we would be, we would be happy to throw something in a truck and take it up there, right Jake?
Yeah, I've done one before.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's it.
How's the personal, or anything?
Yes, I just wanted to let everyone know, and as you already know, we received a message for that, from a lady about parking and the situations. And I know we've recently talked about parking, and it's no reflection on Jake or your crew for any snow removal, but the snow exacerbated her parking issues at her property. And so I just wanted to make sure that even though we already talked about parking, there are people and streets in this borough that really do, on a good summer day, suffer with parking issues, let alone when the snow comes. It just makes it all the more hard, all the more difficult. So I just assured her that we were still talking about parking and looking at that. But I just wanted to make sure that you knew that there are people right now, as of yesterday, that are still in a situation where it makes life difficult for them to. She said she's afraid to even leave her house for fear she won't have a space when she comes back. And, you know, I just think we need to think of those kind of people right now because they're taxpayers too.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon, I did have one idea, and I emailed it to have, to start thinking about, as we're thinking about parking ordinance, if we can include something related to company vehicles being parked on residential streets between the hour, or between, you know, non-business hours, basically covering the evenings and weekends. Because, I mean, you got, you got a house with, someone with a work truck that's parked out front, you know, you've got two or three of them on the street, that's extra vehicles that are taking up parking for, you know, like, I know, I mean, my son has a work truck and, I mean, so I know how easy it is to have a house with three people and five vehicles. It just, it happens, but whatever we can do to help people remember to be respectful of their neighbors and not take up all parking is, you know, what we need to do.
So we have started looking into the. So we have started looking into the concept that came out during our parking meeting of, you know, looking at, using the economy of scale and starting to look at neighborhoods, and if you guys want to talk to me individually about where these problem areas are, we'll start looking at where we can target and get the most effective use of our alleys and, you know, parking off of the main streets so that we can, you know, make parking as effective as possible for residents.
Thank you.
I have nothing, because I said all my stuff earlier. The next meeting at 6:30 PM on February 23rd, council will hold information session to receive information from its borough manager and solicitor prior to the regularly scheduled meeting at 7:00 PM. Tonight, we are going to adjourn to an executive session to discuss the McGinnis Airport property purchase and a personnel move. Can I have permission to adjourn?
So lose.
And a second.
A second.
I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Leonard, to adjourn the meeting at 9:00 or 7:00 PM, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that goes. All right, that's a wrap, folks.
Yeah.
Why does it sound like we have an executive session?
Cut it, cut them off.
Oh.
We had, we had other people online.